Twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, conference agenda meeting. We're going to start off with our roll call.
Freeholder's actor, here. Bartlett, here. Best, here. Duffy, here. LaFleur, here. Deputy Director James, here. Director Lizera, here.
And moving right on, we're going to move into the Administrator's Report.
We're going to go a little out of order from the agenda, Director. I had to start with the presentation and recognition of the Spanish heritage month, which is being celebrated throughout the country in the State County. I'm not sure who's taking the lead on this Spanish heritage. I am. Okay, great. You're up, Freeholder Bartlett, if you want to make a...
Pass it to you.
I mean, Freeholder James, yes. Right there.
Oh, yours.
So, Freeholder James is going to proclaim his to Councilwoman Esther Perez for the Borough of Prospect Park. Esther, one of the...
Just one before I greet proclamation, I'll...
Very loud, Mr. Freeholder, very loud.
You know, I met Esther when I was running, actually, with her now twelve years ago. And there's an immediate life commitment. When I first...I've been around Patterson since nineteen sixty-eight. Started working as a sports or service beginning in nineteen seventy-four. And the largest community, Latino community in the State County at the time, Puerto Rican community, my God, so Puerto Rican. It is a very easy culture for me, because Latino culture is Latino culture. So, my family was Italian, so religiously, there was camaraderie with me. Blat de la, blat de la, it's all the same. It's really kind of the same culture. So, I was always very comfortable there, so I immediately, when I met her, and she was councilman, and I think she's a leader, right, for the Democratic Party. So, I know what she'd done, I know what kind of person she is, how she cares about people. And she had some issues in family, but she stepped off the council after serving quite a while in the great Borough of...Borough, Council of Prospect Park, which is...
Borough.
Borough. Republican. Republican. And so now she's back, and I'm thrilled that she's back, because she was a great councilwoman before. So, let me just read what's going on in the National Hispanic Heritage Fund. So, whereas Esther Perez was born and raised in the city of Patterson, she attended Patterson Public Schools, and was a graduate of Eastside High School. She attended Martha State University, American Intercontinental University, where she earned her BA. She was a teacher in Patterson, is a teacher in Patterson in the past twenty-seven years, and a dedicated, tough Patterson's, got its problems funding-wise and everything else, and Esther hangs in there and does what she can do for those who can't do it, for the kids, and very well, by the way, there. Esther Perez has been involved in Patterson, Puerto Rican, Native, where she has held various titles from public relations to secretary. She's a member of various organizations. She served as former legislator, paid to Senator John J. G. K. Esther is a proud owner and the first Hispanic woman elected to the Borough of Prospect Park Council, where she served for twelve years, and I like the fact that she's a first. Shouldn't have been first, there should be many more before you, but the fact that you wrote that down is impressive. She served for twelve years, she returned to the council in September two thousand sixteen and was re-elected in November two thousand sixteen. She chaired many committees, as well as being council president five times during her last tenure. Esther Perez serves as Chair of the Hispanic Heritage Committee, a committee that was necessary due to the growing Hispanic population in the State County, and we're celebrating the second annual celebration. And whereas Esther Perez is hardworking, true, inspiring individual, and much of her time and energy is towards improving the effectiveness of the community, the quality of life of the citizens in their towns and in the county. Now, therefore, we proclaim that the Freeholders of the County of State proudly applauds and acknowledges the numerous achievements and significant contributions that Esther Perez has made and continues to make, benefiting and demonstrating her proud Hispanic heritage. And we extend you the best and sincere wishes for you for continued success, and I have no doubt that we'll have continued success. You're an awesome person. You really are. Thank you.
All right, I just want to say two or three little words. I'm very honored, I just want to thank all of the Freeholders, that this is a special honor to me. Me, my mom, totally trying to get help with her, and she's going to be honored. And her daughter, how we can give this award. What can I say? I serve, I enjoy what I do, enjoy teaching, I enjoy volunteering, my family, my mom, and our home. I do go home and cook. But I'm very humbled by this. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Freeholder actor, who's going to make the presentation to Councilwoman Ortiz, also from the Borough of Prospect Park. Maybe a smaller split there, please.
And I do want to commend, two of our three honorees are from Prospect Park, and I think that shows diversity, I don't know if it's people, but representation. You see Councilman Ortiz, Mayor Council President, Councilman Don Sean, of course, Mayor Hula. I think the leadership that is shown in Prospect Park and the amount of activity, whether because they're small municipalities, or the amount of activity in Prospect Park, so thank you all for being here. Whereas, our meeting is celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteen, two thousand seventeen, through October fifteen, two thousand seventeen, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contribution made by many in the past twenty years, the Board of the Freeholders of the County of State, who has been in for this time to honor and recognize Felicia Amblero and Ortiz. Whereas she was born and sent to the Dominican Republic, was oldest of three sisters, and raised by a single mother. Whereas she was involved in different organizations during her school years because of her academic and athletic abilities, received a scholarship from Central American University of Puerto Rico, which is a permanent degree in accounting and business administration, and also an associate degree in education. Whereas she was a member of the Dominican Republic National Olympic Team, fourteen years, with developed ability in different facets such as the hundred meters class, the hundred meter hurdles, the two hundred meters, four hundred meters class, four meters hurdles, decathlon, four-by-one hundred meters, four-by-one hundred open, and was...sorry, four-by-four hundred open, and was record holder for more than twenty years. She represented the Dominican Republic in Central American Olympic Games, Pan American Games, World Championships, Olympic Games, and varied invitation competitions around the world, obtaining many medals and awards that she would name immortal sports in the Hall of Fame for the national sport in the Dominican Republic. Whereas she moved to Patterson eighteen seventy, their family, President resides in Prospect Park. She's employed as sales manager for seventeen years. She has served in support services for mental health, successful real estate agent. And whereas she's been a member and leader of numerous organizations where she's been victim of domestic violence. Whereas she's a hardworking, inspiring individual, with her time and her voice, improving the effectiveness of the community and the quality of life. She served as councilwoman of Prospect Park for the past nine years. She's a recipient of the annual Women's History Month Award, New Jersey Senate, the Women of Excellence by New Jersey Assembly, and the Example Mother by the Women's Parade in the state of New Jersey. And whereas Felicia Amblero and Ortiz are four children and two grandchildren, therefore being proclaimed by the Four Children Freeholders of the County of State, proudly applauds and acknowledges the numerous achievements and significant contributions that Felicia Amblero has made and continues to make, benefiting and demonstrating her proud Hispanic heritage. And in further respect, to this Board, we extend sincere wishes to her.
We're doing it, we are doing one. We are doing what you, by now, may have to offer. I would like to thank the Freeholders for inviting me to Patterson County, for the opportunity and consideration for bringing me a day like today, knowing my Hispanic heritage. I've made me Hispanic heritage for so many years, I'm here for thirty years for the same time, and I feel so proud of it, because I bring my family here. Besides that, I feel like I belong to other countries. Even I visited so many countries, even my time, I was a travel teacher, I had the opportunity to travel around the world. Then, when I came to do my education, I received a fortune in Puerto Rico, and then I feel like I belong to Puerto Rico, because I got married in Puerto Rican, I have four beautiful children, he and my two little ones. What happens in Puerto Rico right now is something that affects everyone. I feel affected too, because this is the time that my family or my children, I don't have the time to communicate with them, and they have to work hard, and this is the time the Hispanic community unify. We feel we have to work together to help the people who need at this time. I'd like to say thank you very, very much for this consideration and for this honoring. Thank you.
All right. We're going to take a few pictures now, and we'll talk about the end of this.
While you're getting up, I know Prospect Park has cut out full force in there, but the rule is here. Councilman Jobs, Artis, you, 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 Our county community college is down by over a thousand students from last year, in large part because people are fearful of coming to school for the, for the chance that they may be picked up by immigration boards. People are fearful of coming to court because of the same reason. And I would imagine, unfortunately, that our chair of officers are facing difficulty because people are less likely to want to testify or give evidence against anyone, again, worried that they may be picked up by immigration boards. This is not only troubling to me as a person on a duty level, but as a public official, this is counterintuitive, and I want to point that out.
I did a script at all, wanted to applaud and praise my colleague, Freeholder Director, for his work on this. He was the president of the board of commissioners in the last few months, under your direction and leadership, Director, on this policy. And thank you also, Councilman Bill, for you and your colleagues who worked with us on this. This is a set of principles of this board that stood up for each of us over the last couple of years. I want to thank all my colleagues, Chris standing up two years ago on the issue of Syria Iraq issues, that is so immediate and salient to dozens of families here, particularly the Paris area, and standing up again last year with respect to the board, and clearly this year, with respect to the President's multiple day. This is not a, perhaps if you would look at it as a fairly remarkable document, but it's noteworthy that we have set out, we have set a standard, which is that if you're coming to the state county government for services, whether that's the community college, whether that's the Board of Social Services, whether that's any office, if your citizenship matters, if your race, or religion, or other affiliation isn't relevant to the question at hand, it sounds like what we're going to require, and it sounds like what we're going to ask about. And that, I believe, is the most coherent principle. And I'm proud to be part of the board that consistently stood up for that. I'm proud to have colleagues that stand with us on these issues, fortunately rearing their head against, they have big anti answers. And that, I would just point out, I believe we are one of the first counties in Jersey to have a public office.
Anything else?
Yeah. So I just wanted to inform the public that through our county administrator and our economic development department, we are preparing a proposal to request Amazon locate their next manufacturing facility here in the state county. This is a very competitive process. However, we feel that we have both the location as well as the workforce to make a compelling argument why they should locate here in the county of Passaic. So we're excited about the proposal. We're hoping for the best. We understand that it's a very competitive process, but we're confident that we'll submit a full application with all of the interests of the county of Passaic at heart and vote first. So we're really excited about the proposal, and hopefully, come a couple of months from now, we'll be able to announce that Amazon is coming to Passaic County to do all of the jobs, so no pressure.
So are you submitting?
All right.
We're going to move on to the morning portion of the meeting. Do you have a motion to open the morning portion? James?
First.
I just want to try to draw up that you have three minutes. You have to say anything and address.
Freeholders, after, Bartlett, Best, Dumpy, LaFleur, Deputy Director James, Director Lozare.
Yes. So if anyone would like to reserve, come on up. Yes, please.
Seeing no one at podium, I'm a butcher. Congratulations. Congratulations. Wait. Please, Phil.
Kurt Snack, 268 Washington Avenue. Hopefully, we get him. The mic is not working, so the microphone's all, don't laugh, we do need to talk loud.
Right. Okay, Kurt Snack, 268 Washington Avenue, Brooklyn. I'm with the Passaic Rifle Camp Park Coalition. We are writing to the state county freeholders. We are pleased to announce that we have found a new location for the proposed disc golf course for Passaic County. We believe, after extensive evaluation and research, that Creighton Valley Golf Course at 209 Totoma Road, Wade, New Jersey, would be the appropriate venue for the proposed Passaic County Disc Golf Course. Creighton Valley Golf Course is the largest park in Passaic County's park system in Lower Passaic County. In our research, we have found that the disc golf community themselves strongly recommend installing new disc golf courses on the broader areas of operating golf courses. Passaic County has two golf courses on its property, with substantial area for additional disc golf course around and within the current courses themselves. The installation of the new disc golf course could be done immediately. No further preparation of the landscaping would be needed. Having a disc golf course on a traditional golf course property is a real benefit for disc golfers. Golf carts, restaurants, bars, and a pro shop can all be reused by a new clientele. We are not proposing this installation, however, to be done casually without proper planning. Fortunately, Passaic County already has a working relationship with a professional disc golf course designer, who could place a disc golf course in Creighton Valley property without any unnecessary disruption to the traditional golf currently being played there. This is a solution that should please everyone. Disc golfers in Passaic County will have an exciting new course with a full complement of amenities, and Rifle Camp Park can continue with its original purpose, as a natural space which both celebrates and educates Passaic County residents about the complex world around us. Thank you.
The New Shigaska, 34 Van Houten Street, Patterson, New Jersey. The following features of disc golf are exhaustively documented on the Friends of Garrett Mountain page two, page one. Disc golf courses in public parks increase community hostility. From California to Maine, citizens protest the installation of disc golf courses. Players respond with paranoia and an upskirtment mindset. Players express hostility to people they identify as their enemies, birders, dog walkers, and hikers. Players regard courses as their territory. Birders, hikers, and dog walkers trespass on their territory. Two, vandalism. Chains are cut, baskets are tuckled, graffiti are scrolled. A player posted on Reddit that golfers should photograph anyone who posts a turning right of campus into a course. When the course is vandalized, we will be blamed. Three, players injure human beings. Dicks are hardened plastic with sharp edges. They travel at seventy-five miles per hour. A woman blinded by a player was claimed paid three million dollars of taxpayer money. Enrico Pagan lost an eye from a disc thrown from three hundred feet away. In online posts, players freely admit to targeting hikers for trespassing on their courses, teach them a lesson. Players tell women with children to stay off the course. Four, players damage property. On discussion sites, there are pages of players describing their using discs to dent cars and break windows. One player acknowledged denting a car and then arguing with the owner for an hour against pay for damage. Another player acknowledged clinging to the open window of a moving car. Players acknowledge targets of parked cars of their enemies, birders, hikers, and dog walkers. Five, players injure animals accidentally and on purpose. Players admit to stalking, harassing, and killing bees, squirrels, deer, owls, and snakes. Six, players injure vegetation. Disc hit trees in Gaucho Park. One player said that so many trees have died that his horse has become a desert. Some courses have erected barriers around trees. Many bird species live on bark, woodpecked chickies, not active black and white wood hornets. Seven, players' own statistics show that a majority of disc golfers consume alcohol or smoke marijuana while playing. Numerous tournaments are underwritten by alcohol-related factors. Players describe their courses as littered with empty beer cans and cigarette cups. Eight, in the disc golf course discussion sites I have visited, I saw zero evidence that players, as a group, have any concept of the environment other than as their playground. They shoot at animals that are near their baskets. They express contempt for the Sierra Club and the Audubon Society, and they cheer the gashamies as a sign of their own personal mania.
Hi, Chris Packers, Leonard's, New Jersey. I'm with Friends of Garrett Mountain Reservation. Just want you to remember, this is what it's getting from. I can throw this across the room anywhere here for me, just as any old fifty-five-year-old guy could throw it, and pretty much anybody here will be injured. Things will be broken. They are extremely dangerous. This is a projectile that's currently banned in your parks, Passaic County parks. This would be referred to as a missile in your park ordinances. So just to let you know, you're ready to have something, you're inviting something in that is banned from the park. I wasn't very happy to understand that Passaic, that New Jersey Audubon was, we were told that New Jersey Audubon really had nothing bad to say about putting this, this golf course in, when I believe that they were partly misrepresented in one of the freehold meetings here, that, in my opinion, as well as opinions of New Jersey Audubon board members, which I spoke and serve on boards with, that New Jersey Audubon came down hard on Passaic County about the disc golf. Some of the points from the New Jersey Audubon matter were, it's important for managers of the park to make the preservation of existing resources a major planning focus and monitor any effects to the wildlife and the ecosystem health. Another point is that the IDAs, which are important bird and biodiversity areas, are critical habitat where development and impact should be avoided or minimized. An IDA not only stands out for its importance to birds, but because of its vulnerability. Garrett Mountain is very vulnerable. It's vulnerable because of the deer. It's vulnerable where it is. It is a special place, and I don't think that everyone that's promoting this disc golf understands that. Excessive removal of vegetation will be detrimental to species, especially endangered and threatened species. If vegetation may be cut down, it will include valuable habitat to whatever birds, animals, whatever. Several studies suggested, over time, traffic over soil from disc golf activity contributes significantly to soil compact, which negatively impacts future vegetation and increased soil erosion. New Jersey Audubon has a mission to protect New Jersey's animals, precious habitat. One of our major priorities is preserving these IDAs, locations identified for the conservation that are critical to bird populations. Rifle Camp Park contains extremely valuable and significant habitat. We recommend alternative sites to be considered for this project. If that's not saying that New Jersey Audubon does not support this, that New Jersey Audubon is against this, I don't avoid it.
Turn this up.
Thank you.
Committees, nine courts, ladies and gentlemen. From Jeff Till, Director of the New Jersey Sierra Club, with his following statement. We are asking Passaic County Freeholders, if you turn down the proposal for a disc golf course at Rifle Camp Park or find another alternative. Before you go forward with the proposal to clearcut a park, you should look at alternatives. So far, freeholders have failed to look at any other options other than to turn the park into a single use for a disc golf course. The problem is there are many other sites that they can have a disc course on, like the Creighton Valley Golf Course or under county-owned sites. Instead, they move forward, they will be changing the use of Rifle Camp to a single use, which cannot be enjoyed by everyone. This is an outrageous sellout of public parkland that belongs to all of us. The freeholders need to listen to the people they represent and put this, this golf course somewhere more appropriate that doesn't destroy open spaces and limit public, public access. The proposal to have a disc golf course at Rifle Camp Park is completely inappropriate. This park is the county's second most visited park. It is held in a public trust. This proposal is about selling recreational equipment, not keeping open space. The problem is they want a single use of the park while birders, hikers, and no longer use it. This proposal is a step towards privatization that keeps people out of a public park that should be for everyone. The next thing we know, our parks will turn into theme parks. Without voting on the project or having a public hearing, which is required by the neighbors, the county is unilaterally moving forward without public input. That means the county can begin clearcutting areas of the park at any time. We should preserve unsavable open spaces such as this one. If we turn the park into a disc course, it, this course, it will be, impacts the wildlife habitat as well as wetlands. There will also be additional runoff from clearcutting the trees, which will cause more flooding and pollution. Freeholders must move this proposal to another site, especially when there are clear alternatives. This existing golf course has plenty of space that does not require a clearcutting for the disc course within its three hundred and seventy-seven acres. There is also a single-scale area for business or restaurant and bar. This land was purchased in the public trust, and the freeholders did not violate that trust. We need them to move this proposal to the Creighton Valley Golf Course, which makes much more sense and does not destroy our environmentally sensitive areas and open space.
Hi, I'm Michael Somovich, thirteen other tribes of New Jersey. Rifle Camp Park is one of my favorite parks in this area. It's just a, about a ten-minute drive from my home, and there's really nothing else around here, like, as far as the ecological diversity. It's really like an oasis, a little, like, safe haven for the animals and wildlife that live in this area, that probably even supports, you know, most of everything else we see going on around it. And basically, it's just one of the most beautiful places that I've seen. And what's important about it is that it's untouched. It is so not built up, and let nature do its own thing out of that land. It's something that, you know, we can keep it as it is, or, you know, once you change it, you can't go back. And that's the place in this area that is just so. So please consider finding a better place to build a disc golf course. Thank you.
Anyone else want to go up?
My name is, my name is Hughes. I live at fifteen West Avenue Avenue Park. Going to ask for your indulgence. Really not feeling my best right now. I know you can probably hear me. I'm a hawk, and I'm a boy scout here in town, and I'm another boy scout. It's really like an oasis, a little safe haven for the animals and wildlife that live in this area that probably even supports, you know, most of everything else we see going on around it. And basically, it's just one of the most beautiful places that I've seen. And what's important about it is that it's untouched. It is so not built up. And let nature do its something with that land. It's something that, you know, if you can keep it as it is, or, you know, once you change it, you can't go back. And that's the place in this area that is just so. So please consider finding a better place to build this golf course.
Did anyone else want to go up?
My name is Missabuse. I live at 15 West Avenue Avenue, Park. Going to ask for your indulgence. I'm feeling that bad start now. I know you can probably hear me. I have a mom and I have a boy scout here in town, and the other boy scouts very actively use Rifle Camp Park. Disc golf is not exactly predictable for this land. It's like that hazardous to the kids, as well as all the other kids that use the park. The Girl Scouts are pretty active in the park. The residents are pretty active in the park. There's lots of dog breed in the park. As we previously mentioned, wildlife refuge. This is not a great place to have a disc golf course. And it's a part of the public trust. There are so many better options in places to have a disc golf course. And like I said, I'm going to ask for indulgence, but I'm already scrapping out. But as a mom, as a member of the town, that they are trying to put the park in as a boy scout leader, and beyond, this is not an option that I feel should be considered. And I hope that you're listening too. Hope you're listening to the constituents, and I hope you make the right decision.
Sandy Sheebak, 341 Preakness Ave, Patterson. I look at all these flags that are circling the podium here, and in almost every one of those nations, natural habitat is under assault by corporations, by private industry. I think that we need to set, we have an opportunity to make certain that loss of habitat in this particular circumstance does not happen. I think 50 years from now, I hope that future generations don't look back and say, what were you thinking? Destruction of our reefs, the climate change that is going on now, destruction of the Amazon jungle is affecting life around the planet. We need to preserve what we have and protect it. It's just that simple.
Craig Nantano, 59, Passaic, New Jersey. Welcome.
I live in Walhorn, and I honestly, I've gone to Rifle Camp Park a few times, and just to get away, it's serene. I just enjoy it, even though I have Goffbrook Park down the street from my house. Honestly, I just want to keep this preserved, and if there is a viable option, which they are presenting now, we need to explore that. It's a lot easier for maintenance, upkeep, security probably, to just consider the other option out there now. It would be a lot more difficult to dig up the land, go through all this, lighting everything we're going to need, than just use the other viable option that could be for this park.
Quickly, I'd like to read a response, a comment from Ann Schnecker, just to say Washington Avenue, New Jersey. I'll begin now. I would like to read to you a comment on our State Rifle Camp Park Coalition website in response to the letter from New Jersey Audubon concerns for a disc golf course. As an avid disc golfer, I found this letter informative and eye-opening. I now understand the real concerns over the project. I have been swayed. I will now sign the petition. There obviously is a better solution. And people, here it is. Dear Freeholders and Administrators, aside from the obvious fact that putting a disc golf course in another location would protect the last remaining piece of open public space in lower Passaic County, as well as the Garrett Mountain State Important Bird Area, here are two other good reasons why this golf course belongs at the Preakness Valley Golf Course. Safety. No hikers, pedestrians, bird watchers, people strolling with baby carriage, et cetera, are permitted on the course. The entire Preakness Valley Golf Course facility is designed, staffed, and operated with tee times and safety in mind to avoid players being harmed by flying objects. Two, there is more oversight. There are more workers employed at the golf course than at any other Passaic County park, and therefore more security would be present than in the forest at Rifle Camp. And less opportunity for inappropriate activities like drinking, substance abuse, and littering to take place. Alcohol can legally be purchased there at the golf course, and this, in fact, along with the pre-existing restaurant pro shop, would attract more players to the course. Both of these reasons would also make participation in a sport that is new to many a more friendly, family-friendly experience. The Horizon Foundation in New Jersey, who is funding the project, would be proud to have their logos present in such a fine facility, and then would end up being seen by a wider range of people, so it would be great public relations for them instead of the bad PR and protests awaiting them if the course is installed at Rifle Camp Park. The county could also make money on this by charging a nominal fee to players for lessons and selling disc golf gear in the pro shop. And you, our Passaic County Freeholders, could preserve open, public open space, protect an Audubon Important Bird Area, and walk away heroes. You could be heroes. It's our sincere hope that you will do the right thing and make the right decision. So tonight, I am now deliver to ask you again to save Rifle Camp Park by motioning to stop the installation of the disc golf course there. I am now also going to formally ask each one of you, please move this project to the location best suited for it in lower Passaic County. The county's Preakness Valley Golf Course. Thank you.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes. Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. The motion to accept the resolutions, consent, agenda, Jake 1 to Jake 46.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes. Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. The motion to accept the resolutions, consent, agenda, Jake 1 to Jake 46.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. The motion to accept the resolutions, consent, agenda, Jake 1 to Jake 46.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. We received the document.
Received the file.
You have a question.
Move it.
No.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. We received the document.
Received the file.
You have a question.
Move it.
No.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. We received the document.
Received the file.
You have a question.
Move it.
No.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. The motion to accept the resolutions, consent, agenda, Jake 1 to Jake 46.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. The motion to accept the resolutions, consent, agenda, Jake 1 to Jake 46.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. The motion to accept the resolutions, consent, agenda, Jake 1 to Jake 46.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. The motion to accept the resolutions, consent, agenda, Jake 1 to Jake 46.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. The motion to accept the bills.
Second.
Doctor.
Yes.
Colonel.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
The record was out.
Yes. The motion to accept the resolutions, consent, agenda, Jake 1 to Jake 46.
Freehold Doctor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Before.